Good evening. It's 5:15 time for our Monday, May 12th meeting. Please rise and welcome the leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Very much. Roll call will show that everyone is in attendance. And we do have a special proclamation to read this evening regarding mental health. It's called the Mental Health Awareness Proclamation. And I see there's a good turnout of people that work with this every day. And I know a lot of you and I appreciate everything you do. It's a tough job. So anyway, here we go. Whereas the month of May has been declared as Mental Health Awareness Month, and whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, good mental health sustains an individual's thought process, relationships productivity, and ability to adapt to change or face adversity. And whereas mental health adversely affects those abilities and often is life-threatening in nature, and whereas serious mental illness such as major depression, bipolar disorder, schizophrenia, obsessive-compulsive disorder, severe anxiety disorders, and post-traumatic stress disorders affect one in every five people annually, and suicide is the second-leading cause of death of our youth in Iowa. And whereas education and prevention are effective ways to reduce the burdens associated with mental illness, and we all share the responsibility to help anyone with signs of mental illness and to help promote awareness and understanding of mental wellness, mental illness and substance use disorders, and support prevention efforts in our families, schools, and community. Now therefore, I, Gerald Plushner, Mayor of the City of Carroll, declare the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month and call upon our city council and the community to promote awareness and understanding of mental wellness and to stand by those with mental health challenges and to remind them that they are never alone. Thank you very much. We're going to give this back to you.
Okay.
We'd like to follow. Do you want to talk?
Can I say two words?
Yes.
So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. I am Jen Barber. I'm from Compass Healthcare. Yes, everybody, come on up. And I am here representing Carroll County Youth Behavioral Health Consortium. And I want to take a few minutes to recognize my partners here this evening that are focused on expanding and enhancing youth behavioral health, prevention, treatment, recovery, and crisis services. So tonight we have Catholic Charities. We have St. Anthony. We have Plains Area. We have New Opportunities. And Mark is a mentor from New Opportunities. We have Seasons, St. Anthony, Jen from Compass. So just want to recognize everybody doing all the hard work and dedication that they have for the youth and their families. It's so greatly appreciated and invaluable. So collectively, we have focused on reducing stigma by normalizing conversations around mental health. Catholic Charities and St. Anthony has led the charge in organizing community education and events, especially during Mental Health Awareness Months. We have trained over 900 professionals and individuals in courses such as Youth Mental Health First Aid, Assessing and Managing Suicide Risk, and Safe Administration of NARCAN, to name a few. Additionally, we have integrated Character Strong Curriculum into three school districts and expanded the school-based therapy services. We've also expanded access to school counselors, social workers, school resource officer, and created a new position, the Permanency Support Specialist that focuses on foster and adopted individuals and their families. There is a collaboration between Carroll Community Schools and New Opportunities to build their youth tiger mentoring program at the middle school. There really is just such great work being done by all of our partners here during Mental Health Awareness Month, but all year long. And so we've created a flyer that highlights all of our accomplishments in the last two, almost two years. And we just really look forward to the next two years in expanding and building a sustainable behavioral health system to support our youth. Contact us if you'd like to get involved. But thank you for your time and recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month. We appreciate it.
So a question, is there anything as a city that we can do better to help with the mental health? As a veteran of 21, 20 years, a coach, I've dealt with the mental health. And I think that we all play our roles. So is there any, do you have a, we've got three minutes. Is there anything that the city, I think that we, that you would like to see us do to support you better in this journey through, you know what I mean? Especially with the youth and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm. Obviously, from my perspective, and if anyone else wants to jump in, just continue to raise awareness and spread like information that we send out. If you guys are not receiving that information, we would love to be in contact with you to like inform the community of all of the great work that everybody is doing. I think there's room for that, to be just more awareness of what we are doing so that people know that there is help out there. There's agencies, there's people here that want to help and support their youth and their families.
I'd be willing to be on your email list for that.
Okay. Yep.
As a compliment.
If there's no other one challenge for you, please, if you have something.
Yes, I'm Dr. Amy Canuso. I'm the Director of Psychiatric Services. I would, actually was hoping I could invite myself back at some point just to publicly make a statement about some things that I have concerns about in the community, especially as things are changing. So I would just like to be on your radar and would be glad to speak to interview at any time about some of my concerns with the community.
If there is anything that you can do, I think that it's important that we all take an honest role in, you know, addressing mental health.
So where is it at? Is it increasing, decreasing? You know, because of your work and stuff? Is it?
Increasing.
Increasing even with all your work?
Yes.
Okay. That's sad.
I think one difference between, I've been around the block a long time with this. A lot of health care, but in healthcare and in dispensing medications, in my case, one thing that's gone in a positive direction. I can remember when Prozac first came out and no one would even admit they took it, all right? There was a stigma about mental health or mental illness that if you needed something like that, and you all know that this is something that is built into someone. It's not something that you can prevent on your own. And it's great to see that at least people are not afraid to admit that they're using things to help them. And that's a big change from in the past. So I would like to follow with you guys with this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, if you send us an email, we can coordinate something. That's what I'm looking for. Yes. Okay. Thank you, guys. Awesome. Thank you.
With all those workers and there's still clear shortage of people that are working on, to help.
People like this, and it's great to see them take such an interest to come down here. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes of the April 28th and May 7th, 2025 meetings, approval of bills and claims, licenses and permits, which include new cigarette permit for rolling cigars of The Heartland LLC. Is there any questions about the, will there be a motion to approve? Tom, Jason seconded it. Roll call, please.
Bower?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Born Arrow?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Questions approved.
Okay, are there any oral requests or communications desired from the audience this evening? That would be someone from the public that wants to speak about something that is not on the agenda this evening?
I am.
Okay, go ahead. Come on up.
Good evening. I'm Barry Bruner. And I had to come tonight after spending four days, parts of four days, down at Merchants Park. Now, the worst part was sitting next to Laverne. You know, it talks, 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 talks. He's a little bit like Tommy Born Arrow, but no. Your investment in Merchants Park is tremendous. And we had this tournament this weekend of Iowa community colleges. We had an opportunity to show to people that never get to Carroll or have never been to Carroll. And they loved Merchants Park. The players loved Merchants Park. They loved the history. You saw more people in this smaller crowd. And I suspect we had Dave, 200 a game? 200 a game. We had six games. We had eight games. I don't know how many games. But there was, it was really fun to have that new set of people come and see our community and talk about it and want to talk about it. It was interesting then, too. I went to a baseball game in Des Moines, and I'm standing in line, and I won't tell you that I'm standing in line to the concession stand, but standing in line and visiting with a guy who had moved to Des Moines from North Dakota. And he asked where I was from, too. And I said Carroll. And he said Carroll? He said, you guys have a tremendous baseball stadium there, don't you? My son goes to Waukee and played a game last year in Carroll and couldn't stop talking about it. And then the guy behind him in line said, you're from Carroll? Yeah, that's the greatest baseball stadium ever. So anyway, your investment is far-reaching and exciting to see. And I would like to have each and every one of you come and work in the concession stand, except Tom.
I'd say that happened on Tuesday.
And another thing, Jason, as I look at the project, and there's still things to be done down there. There's grass, there's grading, there's some painting that needs to be done. But I came and you got, and the council was going to talk about waiting on the towers, the light towers. Those got done, and gosh, they look good.
We weren't talking about waiting on light towers. The lighting was a safety issue. We were talking about the, we were talking about the dugouts.
Oh, the, well, but that one night I was here. We were talking about painting the towers.
We can go back and watch it again.
But, no, but I mean, there was encouragement from you on that aspect of it, too.
A lot of that was just a duty.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, those look tremendous. I don't know how they got up there and painted all the things and stuff. But anyway, thank you from a citizen for your continued interest in a tremendous community project. Thank you.
Barry, we owe you a thank you as well because I know that you had a lot to do with raising private funds to help this along.
Well, we do, and we'll continue to do that and be a partner with the city. It's just, it's just fun. It is just fun to be down there.
All right. Thank you very much.
And we even had Brad involved a little bit. We'll talk later.
Thank you, Barry.
Hey, oh, oh, one other thing. Chad, I'm glad he's home sleeping because I think he spent, you know, 21-hour days from Thursday to Sunday. And all the games went long.
He had a 90-hour week last week.
I can believe it. Yeah, tremendous. And we thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, yeah. I was hoping the fire chief would come down and help a little bit, but I didn't see him. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, too. All right, we'll move on to ordinances. The first ordinance is solid waste collection fees. And Aaron?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The last, a couple of weeks ago, I was contacted by the haulers about regarding the solid waste fees and the contract that would expire at the end of June. In the conversation and doing some renegotiations, the haulers have requested an increase in the fee from $14. And I don't recall what the fee is now, but it's, they're requesting to go to $15.17, which would then add the $80, $80 cents for the administrative fee, which would move the entire garbage monthly fee to $15.97. Doing some investigations into other communities that are similar to our size, that still puts us second to last in the 10 or 12 communities that we compare ourselves with on most times. And even after an eight-year contract with increased fees over the eight years, that would still leave us in the bottom without even considering the increased fees that those communities are going to have. So I would recommend approval of the agreement with our solid waste haulers and the first reading of the ordinance. But the ordinance has been amended to add the tipping fees as per, as a request of our city attorney. So there is a slight adjustment to the ordinance that we made today.
So you're saying that we don't, we wouldn't be able to approve that first reading today because of that, or?
No, you can't.
You can't?
You still can't.
Okay. Are there any questions?
What was the tipping fee? How much did you buy it to?
The tipping fee from the current contract to this contract, the current tipping fees are going to be $48, which is what is in the agreement. If it goes over $52, then the hauler could add another seven cents, which is similar to the contract that we had before. The tipping fee started at $43, and then if it went over $46, then they could start adding seven cents. So we actually got a dollar extra on that tipping fee before they could start adding an extra seven cents.
Scott, I have a few questions on this for you. New rates go into effect July 1st from $47 to $48. So all the counties that are hauling garbage into us, what is their rate?
It's $27, $28.
Why is theirs half of ours?
Because they have the transfer station and they process their own recycles. And Jerry's also on the board.
I'm on the same board as he is, so that's inaccurate.
They come, theirs come in, like I say, from a transfer station, like in a coaster grain truck with a walking floor.
Yeah. What do you anticipate these fees going? Obviously, it doesn't take long to use up a bunch of land when you have multiple counties hauling garbage into us.
Correct. We've got it projected out. It's less than 2% a year. It's, I don't have it with me, Kyle, but Jerry has the information. Or if you look back in your minutes, a few months ago, it's in your minutes from the landfill, from our meeting.
I don't have it here either, but.
Cell expectancy is another 30 years.
What? Sorry?
Because it was 33, three years ago.
Plus, we acquired the 73 acres beyond.
Cell expectancy is good for another 30 years.
Okay.
Yeah. But it is minimal, Kyle. And we are, I think, the second cheapest in Iowa as far as our tipping fees.
Isn't that 30 years without adding on the new land?
Correct.
So it can be a whole lot more years past.
Yes, yeah, it'll go into the next century.
Or without adding any other cities or communities.
That's how I read it, too.
One thing about the 30 years that we've kind of learned from being on that board is you have to be way ahead of the game because they can, it takes years to get things even approved to be used, the land, you know? So there's, you really, you really need to be ahead. Five years, if you were only ahead five years, you'd be nervous, right? Wouldn't you say? Yeah. No matter what, so. All right, any other questions? I look for a resolution approving the residential solid waste hauling agreement as presented by Tom, seconded by Jason. Roll call, please.
Atherton?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Bower?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Born Arrow?
Yes.
And we look for a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance updating the solid waste collection fees as shown by Tom, Jason seconded. Roll call, please.
Born Arrow?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Bower?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Questions approved.
All right, thank you. All right, the next ordinance we're going to go to is stormwater utility charges, first reading. And Randy?
Thank you, Mayor. During budget preparation, there was some discussion of the stormwater utility charges. And one of the suggestions, I guess, that I took away from it was possibly consider increasing those charges by an inflation factor each year. We've prepared an ordinance to institute that at a 2.5% inflation factor. And the impact on that is basically in the ESU rate, increasing that from $3 to $3.10. And then also, within the ordinance, there are some maximums that were placed when the utility was created. $50 to $51.25 for maximum stormwater charge. And then for schools, $25 to $25.65. And for churches, $10 to $10.25. Like I say, the ordinance has been prepared. That reflects those increases. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend your consideration of the first reading of the ordinance amending provisions pertaining to stormwater utility charges.
No questions?
So moved.
All right, Jason moved, seconded by Tom. Roll call, please.
Shrek?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Bower?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Born Arrow?
Yes.
Questions approved.
All right, now we'll move on to water rates in first reading. And Randy, again.
Thank you, Mayor. Also during budget discussion, there was some discussions surrounding the increasing water rates, primarily to finance the Northwest Pressure Zone project. We took, we considered annual operation and maintenance costs as well as proposed capital cost and came up with a revenue expenditure projection that resulted in the need, I guess, for 7.5% rate increases for the first two fiscal years and then 5% for the following two fiscal years. If you'll note that South Gate Road is included in the projection. Of course, it has no bearing on the, this rate increase. And since it's been terminated, it can be factored out of any future consideration for rate increases. I've attached a copy of Chapter 92, which is the water rate chapter in the city code. We've marked that up with the current and proposed, excuse me, numbers. Also attached is the ordinance itself that you would be considering and a comparison of utility rates. First of all, in the ordinance, I'll walk through it just in general terms. Of course, the rates are increased in this ordinance by 7.5%. That includes the rate for irrigation water as well as just domestic water service. For bulk water sales, the same, 7.5%. Although bulk water carries, sales carry with it a service fee if we, the city has to go out and put a meter on hydrant. And those fees have been increased from $40 per hour, or excuse me, $40 per call during regular hours to $55 per call. And then on after-hours to $65. And those are in actual hourly rates of our, some employees. Temporary water service has been increased $3 from $42 to, excuse me, $45. And then again, for restoration of discontinued service, the service call rates have been increased to that $50 and $65. Customer deposits have been proposed to increase from $75 to $90. Now, customer deposits are only charged to rentals if the account does not own the property. That fee is charged and held until the account is closed and then refunded. And the theory for it is, of course, is to cover any delinquent water bills. So it's proposed now at $90 from $75. Defective meter, again, from $40 to $50. Discontinued or renewed, again, the $50 and $65 after-hours as well as the same for service calls. So that's, those are the numbers that have been proposed for increase in this ordinance. Unless there are any questions, well, I guess it could also go through real quickly the typical residential utility bill. We've calculated that. Actually, there's three tables there. The first being for water rate only, the second for water and storm water, and the third for water, storm water, and the trash collection that you just had the first reading of. You'll notice that the first year, the net impact for a typical 1,000 cubic feet per month residential utility bill would go up 3.5% with all three of these rate increases considered. And then following that, a 2.9, 2.19, and 2.22. So even with the 7.5% and 5% rate increases, the impact to a personal utility bill is in the 3 and under percentage increase.
So I've got one question. At the beginning, you said that we're primarily raising these rates to do the Northwest Pressure Zone. It'd take three years to pay off. Are we planning on decreasing these rates after it's paid off? Or are we just raising rates? We're just raising rates, correct?
This would raise the rates to finance the borrowing for that Pressure Zone project.
But once the Pressure Zone is done, we're not going back to our lower rates, correct? We are raising rates.
That would be entirely up to you in the future. I think the borrowing, though, is projected to be longer than three years. But it's entirely up to the council, what they want to do with rates.
Have you ever lowered rates?
Not that I'm aware of.
When was the last time you increased rates?
In water, 2017.
Isn't the loan 20 years?
Pardon me?
Isn't the loan 20 years on the tower?
I don't think it's firmly established, but it will probably be in that range of terms.
So my question, you had about South Gate emitting it? Is there a chart in here on what that would be if we emitted that, or?
Well, for the water rates, actually, it was pretty nominal. The proposal during the development of the South Gate project was to contribute $200,000 to that project from the Water Utility Fund. And now that can be factored out of it, which has very little impact on this, none on this first-rate proposal. Now, in future years, can factor that out and come up with whatever proposal results. So it was nominal in the Water Utility Fund.
Thank you.
And where are our rates compared to other cities? Just, we can go through this just in a second. I want you to kind of see where we're at, like compared to, whether high or low.
I don't have that information with me tonight.
My experience from traveling around is we're still on a very low end of our water and sewer rates.
And we're about to do for a rate increase, I see, anyway?
Yeah, we.
It's 2017.
Yeah, when we budget, we do pay for some water services out of general fund. And so not all of the water services are general fund or, or serviced out of the water fee. So that, so that there's a hit to the general fund on top of the water service. You could, or you could make arguments where some salaries and stuff can get pushed more into the water rates rather than in the general fund. So it's a balance between raising water rates or keeping everything balanced, I guess, would be the statement.
Randy? Go ahead, if you're.
Go ahead.
Okay, I was just going to ask, what are like swimming pools filled with? How are they, how are you billing that? I mean, is that?
Standard rate.
Under irrigation? Because it's outdoors, or?
Standard rate.
Okay.
If it goes through the meter, it's billed to the, at these rates. If it goes through the meter, it's billed to the, at these rates. Irrigation meters, it's billed at the irrigation rate.
They have a special irrigation meter for that, right?
Not necessarily.
I thought people did do that sometimes.
There are a lot of irrigation meters out there, and they can fill their pool through the irrigation meter, but probably, more likely, they don't. It's gone through the regular residential meter, and that gets charged this rate.
Any other questions? I'll look for approval of the first reading of the proposed ordinance amending provisions pertaining to water rates. By Tom, Jason seconded. And roll call, please.
Shrek? Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Dirt?
Yes.
Bauer?
No.
Appleton?
Yes.
Or now.
Yes.
Question's approved by one.
All right, that's it for ordinances. Let's go to resolutions, and the first resolution is tree removal 2025.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Randy?
On May 6, bids for the removal of 60 dead or dying trees and stumps were received, open and tabulated. 16 bids were received. I presented the detail and a summary of those bids. A company called Top Saw Tree Service was the lowest bidder at $47,985. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend your consideration of accepting the proposal of Top Saw Tree Service for the removal of trees and stumps at their bid price of $47,985.
Is this all, is the stump guy in?
Yes, yes.
And Cal, did you look to see what the next closest local bidder was? I don't know if you knew them off the top, I don't.
I see one of the Wolf's, one of the Wolf's, and then one of them didn't have the whole package put in there.
I just didn't want, I wanted to make sure that I didn't miss any, you know what I mean? Those substantial jumps on this company.
There's one in Auburn, the second lowest. Western Iowa Tree Services at $58,429. It's in Auburn, also has an office in Walleye. I started researching because whenever I see an outlier, like a very low bid compared to all the others, I started doing research, and I found a person, but Randy informed me, is the father of the son that is running, right, Randy, this business. And I have to share with what I, and share with what I found about, found out about the father. He, because I looked at the, I've got to find, looked at the proposal from the business, from Top Saw Tree Service, and they give their address at 709 Seventh Avenue in Wellman. And I looked up 709 Wellman, and it's a house that is in pretty, well, kind of moving toward becoming rundown. And the only person I could find with this name who is living in Wellman is the father of this young man. And the reason I became, I emailed Randy with some information because the father was involved back in '08 and '12 in some serious litigation out of state, and then a case that Fry versus Blauvelt in 2012 went to the Iowa Supreme Court. And it was a breach of contract case in '08. He was arrested for felony home repair fraud in Mississippi. So that's why I start, I sent the links to Randy and Erin. I said, is this our guy? And then you did your due diligence, Randy, found out this is the son of the guy. But then I started digging some more on this business, and they, the only thing they have online is a Facebook, or Top Saw Tree Service LLC Facebook posting, and they don't list the same address as on their proposal. They have the 709 Seventh Avenue Wellman Iowa address, but on Facebook, they give 1222 Maple Street, Kelowna. So different addresses, different, different phone numbers. So I'm still very leery of this because they also are south of Iowa City, which is quite a distance. And when I see an outlier, a low bid, I start thinking, and they're quite a ways away, will this get done in time? Will we be happy with their work? Will they do quality work? We had an incident many years ago, Randy was involved with this, with a person who was doing well work for us. His bid was very, very low also compared to the others. And I'm not saying the same thing will happen at all, but we ended up in litigation. So the lowest bid to do the well ended up being pretty high because of the litigation. We had hired Jeff Minnick to represent us, and he got into, it was lengthy drug out. And so I, I still have some second thoughts about going with this bid. Number one, the disconnect with the information. Number two, their distance. I think it would, the second lowest bid is about $10,000 higher than this one. And I, I don't know, I just think to hold people accountable, to have access to people doing this type of work, I don't know, I just feel like, for me, we'd be rolling the dice on this distant company. Randy told me, the man who got into trouble years ago, his father, the, his son told you his father was not involved with this business. That's what the son said. I don't know. I mean, I always want to start out trusting someone, but that's his word. I don't know how this will play out. Then I started asking a legal question of Dave. I hate to ambush him, but late this afternoon, or anyway, late morning, I found, I looked up the Top Saw Tree Service LLC with the Secretary of State, and Barry, you can weigh in too, if Dave's wrong. But anyway, I have a certificate of organization in all the sections here from the Secretary of State, and they have, they have no names except their registered agent, which is some, someone from Waterloo. And then I dug farther and saw, okay, they, this company was formed on April 26 of '21, but then, this is my question for Dave, they filed for dissolution on 8/16 of '23. And my question is, does that, since they dissolved their certificate of organization with the Secretary of State, are they still considered, like, viol, how does that change their status? Do you, or if I'm ambushing you, Dave, I, you know, do you want to see this?
Typically, there's, I, I think I know what you're talking about.
Okay, okay.
Carolyn, typically what happens is if an LLC or corporation doesn't provide its annual report, the Secretary of State will just administratively dissolve them, but it doesn't sound like that's the case in this situation.
I honestly don't know.
They voluntarily dissolve themselves is, is my understanding of what you're saying. So from the legal standpoint, they aren't a legal LLC.
Okay.
In accordance to the Iowa law.
But.
They can reinstate themselves.
But how does that?
And that's a relatively simple process.
Does that have any impact on how they do their work, what they're required, like, I asked Randy too, there's nothing in their proposal about insurance or bonds. There's nothing in there about the project. It's just that we're not scamming anybody, we didn't bribe anybody to get the bid. I mean, I found it a very unusual proposal. I thought it would have more content.
The RFP stated that they needed to carry.
One million.
Two million. It was two million and.
Two million total, plus a, plus a, I believe it was on this one. There was, plus, plus a billion on umbrella.
And Randy told me they provided him with proof of insurance, so.
Okay.
But I, I guess I was expecting a little more detail. I also wanted to know, Randy, do you know, I, I know what I think of my head of restoration because we've had, we just had Booty's remove some trees and stumps in our yard. And when, when they're saying they're going to do the stump removal, disposal, and restoration, what are our expectations of them as a city for the restoration?
The requirement is to grind the stump six inches below the surface and backfill with clean soil and seed it.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So.
How would we pay them? I mean, as the work continues, we would hold money back, obviously, right? If they're not living up to what they're supposed to?
We would pay monthly for work completed.
Okay.
And retain 5%.
Okay, just like.
Normal and customary contracting.
Carolyn, just, just because you did that much research on that one, did you check into the next one, the Western Iowa Tree Services? The one from Auburn?
Yeah, I did.
Did you find anything on them?
I didn't find anything bad, and like, I went to that other address, and there, I couldn't find anything for the 1222, the address in the other town. But I did Auburn, yeah, and, and the house, it had like old cars and just, I mean, it just, I got.
There was one of them from that way that had, we had some issues with that, the golf course that started and never finished.
Yeah.
Right, that was Snyder.
I don't, no.
Caution doesn't take bids on the way that somebody's house looks. I feel like that might be.
Oh, well, I.
They're going into your realm of.
Well, I, I thought, I was, I was looking for, like, equipment. Was there a machine shed or something? And the one in Auburn, it was an aerial, and I expanded it. It was out on a, like, an acreage and had, like, typical metal farm buildings, machine sheds, et cetera. And I, I don't know, my perspective on the things I'm concerned about may not be concerns of anyone else's, but I, I don't know, I'd like to see if Randy could learn more about the Western Iowa Tree Services and Zinnia Avenue in Auburn, and maybe hold off on this. Or, I mean, I, to be honest, I'm not interested in going with this lowest bid for the reasons I mentioned. I, just red flags for me personally.
What's the ramifications if we just postpone this? Is there no rush or anything?
No, there is.
You haven't promised anyone to have a decision by the end of the day or anything?
There's 60 people wanting their trees removed.
All right.
But no, there's no, nothing that is a rush.
Then I, I guess I would ask the council, the rest of the council, if you have any concerns or anything, if you're willing to wait two weeks for him to do some work, and go ahead with your question.
What are the legal ramifications at this point of us not going with the lowest bid versus the highest?
Because the school board went through something like this on who.
And they're going to watch this video, and there's a house with a car and another, like, what are, like, what are our legal ramifications?
We have a bidding process. It's all about, he's got the insurance, I don't understand why we're not accepting the little bid, because.
Because his house is funny or something.
Well, I'm just saying, he's got 60 trees to remove, he's getting paid $700 to remove a tree, he's supposed to. But if two guys are doing that, they're making $700 a day. That's more than most people make in a week at certain jobs in town. So I don't, I don't understand the reason why we're not just accepting the bid.
I, I think it's based on, my frame of reference is what happened with the well.
Well.
And so I've been through that.
I guess, as a business.
It's not about the house, it's about, will we, will the work get done? We went through, Randy went through a lot of he-said, she-said situations where he was not truthful about what Randy said, and it was a distant company. I, I'm, it's just me having gone through that experience, Tom, and.
I mean, I'm all, I'm all for the, the discernment, whatnot, but it's.
I do look at a bid as a bid. I mean, we're talking $10,000, so.
Yeah, Dave, but could you answer that question about, are we bound to take the lowest bid?
Yeah, this, this is not a public improvement project legally, so the council does have discretion as to whom they select. Obviously, the low bidder is, is important, I know, for the council. Location of bidder can be considered if the council so chooses, but council does have more discretion in this regard, if, if that's what you're looking for.
If we have discretion, can we go to the next, our local contractors and say, hey, this was the bid, the low bid that came in, can you get it done like this number?
I would suggest that we don't do that. I mean, I think we're now, I think we're now colluding.
I would suggest that we don't, not give somebody a bid because of the way that his house looks or what his father did for legal ramifications for, I'm not a lawyer, but for.
Jason?
Pardon me.
Stop, pardon me, I listened.
Yeah, go ahead.
For far too long. I would assume that those legal ramifications in a lawsuit probably would not look the best on our part.
Well, I, Jerry, I'd like to.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to comment on that.
You want to make a motion to?
The council.
No, you're no motion, you just, you flat your nose, so.
I, I just want to, it's not the house or the father, it's the distance. And based on my previous experience, I just want to make it clear, and so, that's all.
Would it be out of line to ask you to do, like, a reference check maybe on a couple cities that they've done work for?
I have done that, yes.
You did do that?
Mm-hmm.
And?
They, they, I received positive references. One was on a small contract, one was on one just a little bit smaller than the contract we issued, 60 trees. So it was kind of a range.
How did you know who to go to? Was it references that they provided?
Yes.
That this company provided?
Yes.
And checked with the insurance, his insurance carrier, and asked about the, his history, payment history, you know, the, the stuff you can ask, and that was all positive also.
You had mentioned these 60 trees, people would be wanting these down. Are these the ones that are in their front yard that we have to take down? What are these trees?
They're, they're primarily ash trees. There's three or four that are not, but they're in the street right-of-ways. So they would be in front yards.
Our responsibility.
But on, on public property. And that's what the, the city is responsible for, is removal of those dead or dying trees. And this is the first 60.
How many more do we have after this?
After this, currently, it's about 200.
But you identified the, the most needy trees for now.
We believe that we've targeted the ones that are dead, dead.
Yeah.
And, you know, ash tree, ash borer, it has a characteristic method of dying, and some still have some green leaves on them, so we didn't go with those. But the first effort was the ones that are really dead, and some of them are beginning to lose bark, some, the limbs are getting brittle, they're falling in the wind, and so that's the reason for these 60.
Another way you can look at it is this guy's driving all the way from Iowa City, South Iowa City.
Kelowna.
He's going to come up here and want to get it done quick because of the cost of hotels and whatever. That's another way you can look at it.
So I'm making most of it from the bid.
I just have one more question. Wait, did, did he indicate when he could start?
He did not indicate when he could start. He's interested in finding out if he gets awarded the bid, so we did not talk about a start date.
He has an end date requirement, but not a start date requirement.
We left the end date open for all bidders in the proposal, and let them establish the end date. I cautioned anyone that called that we're flexible, but maybe not July of '26. You know, we would expect this calendar year. And they all came in, like he did, October. And they all came in like he did, October is what I think is in this proposal. There were a few in November, basically all of them were by the end of the calendar year.
Randy, one last question. What towns did you check? Who were the references? Towns close to Kelowna and Wellman or?
Yeah, one was. It was the city of Washington.
Okay.
And one was the Polk County Conservation Commission.
Okay.
So he had worked in, in the Polk County area.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second Jason's motion.
Yeah, if I could make one suggestion, sorry, Mayor. If I could make one suggestion to, to deal with Carolyn's information that their LLC has been dismissed or suspended with the Secretary of State. If council does want to approve this bid, I would suggest that you put language in there that it would be subject to proof of the, their LLC reinstatement.
All right, so that would require a. Okay, so your motion would have to include that, are you willing to?
So my motion is to approve the bid as long as they can approve LLC re- re- certification.
The bid as presented or as, all right, and Kyle, Kyle, are you accepting it with that same? All right, there's.
Is that wording ready?
Yeah, that's fine, yes, thank you.
All right, so it was Jason and then Kyle and roll call please.
Shrek, yes. Dirk?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Seaman?
No.
Atherton?
Yes.
Or narrow?
All right, thank you. Let's go to City of Carroll demonstration grant, Brown Shoe Fit and Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of those projects that we've been waiting for to have, or to begin started, getting started. About a year and a half ago, when we had the Iowa Economic Development Authority here in town, they were recommending that we do a demonstration facade grant with Brown Shoe Fit. They are ready to start, so I'm looking for consideration and approval of the Brown Shoe Fit Company's application for the demonstration grant for a matching one hundred thousand dollars to be funded through local option sales tax, which is what we had planned at the time of instituting this program.
All right, you caught me off guard, I was still finding. Okay, the motion is, is by Jason, seconded by Tom. And you have?
Yes.
You want to say, you want to talk about this or, okay.
Two minutes, two minutes. Vicky Gatch from the Carroll Historic Preservation Commission. I've put some papers on your desk in front of you to show you the history of this building. It's one of the two oldest buildings on Adams Street. Both the Anderson Shoes and this one was built in nineteen oh two. And it was built so well that when the Masonic Temple next door burned down in nineteen thirteen, the firewall between them kept this building from burning down. So it's, it's a well-built structure. And you can see the pictures on what I gave you as far as what it looks like without the facade that's on there right now. And it's really impressive. It's very neat. That's it.
That wasn't two minutes? All right, thank you, Vicky.
This is a match from IEDA?
No, this is a match from us and local option sales tax. They have to put a hundred thousand dollars and we would put in for, after they spent the money, then we would reimburse them to a hundred thousand.
We had previously agreed to this during that initial.
Correct.
Yeah, we agreed to this.
Yep.
I just couldn't remember if IEDA was involved in it or not.
Motion to approve.
All right, by Jason, Tom seconded, roll call please.
Atherton?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Or narrow?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to reports. The first one is water distribution main replacements and Randy.
Thank you, Mayor. Jet Drain Services has completed the water distribution main replacements project. Their date of substantial completion was December twentieth of twenty-four and their date of final completion, April eleventh of twenty-five. Final construction cost was five hundred thirty-seven thousand, sixty-four dollars and forty-five cents. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend your consideration of acceptance of the certificate of completion.
No questions? Go ahead, Tom was, made the motion. Jason seconded, roll call please.
Atherton?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Or narrow?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to device retail permit and I believe Brad.
Thank you, Mayor. As you recall, a couple meetings ago, we had one of these for device retail permit requests. It's from Iowa Code four fifty-three E. It's a new legislation that went into effect in January of this year. And this one is from Carroll's Tobacco Outlet Plus LLC, doing business as R Smokes, R Smokes Plus, which is located at nineteen ten Kitty Hawk Avenue, Suite C. This is the second one and this is very similar to the first one. The, we had an undercover officer go in, he purchased a marijuana pipe from this business. They were not allowed to be selling pipes at the time. They had been informed that before this event. They've also had their license suspended by the Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Compliance Bureau of Cannabis Regulation for civil violation, which, or correction, for a violation of Iowa code for failing to register as a consumable hemp retailer. Had to, led to suspension after some fines and things were not paid also. Similar to last one, the pipes are, in my experience, have been used for controlled substance use, not for other items that these companies have been indicating that they're used for. So my recommendation is denial of this permit and we'll continue to, I'll continue to recommend denial for all future permits that we receive too.
Second?
Do you want to give that one? Okay, all right, Tom made the motion, JJ seconded, roll call please.
Bauer?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Or narrow?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next is the proceeds of sale of fire rescue vehicle. Dan? Oops, no Dan.
Dan had to get to the fire station.
Okay.
We did receive one bid for the rescue vehicle. That was from Newell Fire Department for a hundred ninety thousand dollars and, and one hundred ninety and ten thousand, ten dollars. We would recommend that we utilize that, those funds to pay towards the new water tanker truck chassis that's coming in, the, the whole, the, the down payment for that or the cost for the chassis is around a hundred and thirty thousand, which means we'll then have another sixty thousand of proceeds, which I would still recommend keeping for the, putting towards that same fire truck.
I will go ahead and approve this and publicly say that I had a foot and mouth moment, but we were originally discussing this, so I do a promise.
You're making the motion?
I will make a.
No questions? All right, motion, Tom is seconded. Jason made the motion. Roll call vote please.
Atherton?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Or narrow?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
All right, the next one we go to is asphalt, street patching and Randy.
Thank you, Mayor. Carroll County currently has a large project of asphalt, widening and overlaying on several sections of the county road. That project of that size did warrant the placement of a portable asphalt plant within the county. The county has taken the opportunity with that plant located close to contract with Ten Point Construction Company to do some road patching, asphalt road patching on other roads in the county. So we, we approached Ten Point to try to determine if they were available and what their price would be to do some street patching within the city. Ten Point is available. They did offer us the same square yardage price as they provided to the county for street patching. So we identified several locations that are candidates for asphalt surface patching. Actually, it's an inch and a half removal and replacement. And the Ten Point total estimated cost for those locations would be about eighty-three thousand, three hundred dollars. There is no funding targeted in the current budget for that type of project. If this would be approved, the proposal would be to amend that amount into the current budget from the road use tax fund balances. And your next item on the agenda has that in it already, but that can be altered. So unless there are any questions, I'd recommend your consideration of authorization for Ten Point to proceed with performing asphalt surface patching.
When's the last time we had someone like this come in and, and do this? Is this, it's not an annual thing, is it?
No, we've, this type of project, we've never done.
Never done, okay. Just these are projects we've normally just done on our own, but?
Well, we do asphalt resurfacing.
Mm-hmm.
But those are full width, full, you know, with street blocks. These are little pieces around that are just kind of fatal. And there's, there's several locations adding up to about two thousand square yards.
Okay.
Is this cutting out, making them appropriate or are they just dumping asphalt on their counter and down the hammer?
This is removal of an inch and a half and replacement.
And this is throughout the whole city? Any spot that's bad?
Well, those listed.
Twenty or so places, isn't there? Yeah.
Those are the ones we identified. Some of them obviously is where do you stop, you know? But we tried to do the best we could in some of these areas. And it's, it's a patch.
Is there a chance that if it turns, they're estimating how many yards of this would be, is there a chance that this would be lower and not higher? Correct?
Probably not. We measured, we've measured.
So you're accurate on what?
So we, we should be real, very close to it.
Okay, all right.
Does this patch last longer than like a patch that we were to do?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Like substantially longer?
Probably.
Substantially fired.
Our, our city maintenance crews use cold, high-performance cold patch. And we try to do the best we can with it, but it's still not, this is hot mixed asphalt, so laying with the paper. So it's, it's done better than a city crew could do. And certainly the, the size of these are, are not what you would put asphalt cold patch in. You know, these are.
So this is something that the city couldn't do?
No.
Just for information, cold patching is usually for your potholes, stuff like that, small, two by two, not very much, not very large. We're talking about doing an intersection or a larger piece, which this would be a good, good use of funds for this.
So when is this to be done?
I think they have to finish it by early next month as the asphalt, the county project will be completed and the portable plant will be shut down.
Okay. You know, Scott, when they're, do you have any idea for sure when they're required to have your work done?
Ours have to go through the DOT because ours are different. This is considered maintenance where ours is DOT bid. That's what, what he's talking about, the grinding is what they're doing on one hundred and fortieth, one hundred and fiftieth, down south of Manning and south of Olympic that's going on in the county right now.
All right, if there's no other questions, I, Tom made the motion and is there a second?
Yeah.
Jason seconded, roll call vote please.
Dirk?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Or narrow?
Yes.
All right, next one, next report is on setting public hearing fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget amendment number two and Laura?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you guys can recall in past times, this is the kind of year to look at a budget amendment and changes to the budget needs to be completed by June one to be effective for that fiscal year. A number of items can change during the time that we originally prepared our budget over a year ago to the actual execution of the budget to the end of the fiscal year. I've listed out a number of items in your packet of areas where we've had some expenditures that were unforeseen, as well as just updating from the time that we reestimated this budget twenty-five when we put together our fiscal twenty-six budget and things that have changed. There is one change that I request council to consider from the information that's prepared, the transfer from the hotel motel to the project parking rec fund in the amount of sixty-five hundred dollars for the ban shell project. Since that project is not underway and we don't have cost estimate yet, I recommend not moving that money at this time. And then once we do get bids and know how much the projects cost and if there is a shortfall from what has been raised through private donations and grants, that we can discuss about in the additional city funding that may be needed. So if council's okay with making that change, I can get that updated before we actually publish the notice of the public hearing.
Laura, may I ask you, at some point when you're done with your thing, I thought this would be a good time to update everybody real quick, people watching as well as here. I have your spreadsheet on what we raised from private funds as well as the five grants that Chris got. So you tell me when, I just want to pass it out and a couple of words about the, how it's divided.
Go ahead and do that if anybody has any questions about the items being included in this budget amendment.
And then, okay, I have quite a few, so I have a few looked over. But Laura's spreadsheet is on the top and it's chronological when we receive the donations. And then, so what we ended up doing when, a long time ago, and this project has not moved along, Chad's having to deal with several different engineers. They keep procrastinating, shifting from one engineer to another for different reasons and they're legitimate. But anyway, we're waiting to get the bidding documents and people are checking with Vicky and me and the Carroll Historic Preservation, when's this going to get done? So I want to break it down. Quite a while ago, the estimate by the, our original engineers was around a hundred and fifty thousand minimum for the cost of the restoration. And the council then, we burned through some of the money and, and Laura would know, you voted to kick in sixty thousand for the ban shell. And we've paid some engineering fees. The sixty-five hundred, I believe, is the balance, is that correct, Laura? Part of the sixty thousand?
Fifty-five of the sixty.
Yeah, part of the sixty thousand.
We never committed sixty thousand, we committed to earmark thirty thousand. And it was said on the April fifteenth meeting specifically that we were not going to spend this money and there was no concern at a minute fourteen of the meeting that we were simply penciling this money in and we were going to go out and raise private money.
Right, and, and what I want to.
Thirty, thirty, and then we have thirty earmarks.
To, to, to continue with the information, I think we're really proud of how well this was received. Our original goal was that we would raise fifty thousand in private funds, twenty-five thousand in grants. We actually ended up raising not fifty thousand, but private money, ninety thousand, four hundred thirty-one dollars and eighty-five cents. The five grants that Chris Whitaker applied and we received totaled thirty thousand, three hundred dollars. So with the grants and private funds, not, we have raised a total of one hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred thirty-one dollars. So we've surpassed our commitment to the city. Now, on the next page, we're, we are going to have, and they're very reasonable, we're going to put up a couple of plaques, one inside the Grand Park Shelter House with the donors according to categories. And because Grand Park is a part of the whole athletic system area, we're going to put a plaque in the, in the rec center. So here is a breakdown, but I thought you should see, Laura kept track of the money. She did a fabulous job. Chris got letters out to everyone who donated in a timely manner for tax season. And this is how the donations fell under our various categories. So that's all, I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. All right, if there are any other questions, I'd look for a motion to set Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five as the date for a public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-five budget amendment number two. By Tom, Jason seconded, roll call please.
Seaman?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Or narrow?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.[1774.96]